I want to open up the June 20th, 2011 Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd ask everybody to stand for the presentation of colors from Boy Scout Troop Ninety-Three, Center Grove Lutheran Church.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I call on Chaplain Bernie Louz with the Carreras County Sheriff's Department for the invocation.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we just thank you for this day, and we thank you for another opportunity, another day of life that you've given us. I pray that somewhere along the way today, we've given you thanks for your creation, and just thank you for the life that you've given. Fathers, now, as we come to this evening, as your word commands us, we're to pray for those in authority over us, that we might lead godly and peaceful lives, which is pleasing to you, the Lord, our Savior. Father, the word says that you lift the leaders up, and you take them down, and you turn their hearts like rivers. And tonight, I just pray that you give them wisdom and discernment, let them be known respectfully person in their dispatch or their official business, Father. Father, you have given in these positions, you use it them wisely, to govern over your people, and we thank you again, and we thank you for all that you do for us, and we pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
If the young men from Center Grove Lutheran Church could come forward and introduce yourself, Mr. Downs has a microphone.
My name is John. I go to Wankoff Elementary School.
John, if you'll go over to your right, Commissioner Burge has a pen for you.
Hi, my name is Matthew. I go to Royal Oaks Elementary School.
Matthew, if you'll go over to Commissioner Burge, to your right.
Hi, my name is Daniel Sukoyak, and I go to J.N. Freese Middle.
Thank you, sir. If you'll go over to Commissioner Burge.
My name is Charlie Reimer, and I go to Northwest Carreras Middle School.
Thank you, Charlie. If you'll go over to Commissioner Burge, he has a pen for you. We have before us the approval and correction of the amendments from May the 2nd, May the 16th, and May the 24th. If there is no changes, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from these meetings?
Move they be approved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have the agenda before us, including the changes to the agenda, and that is pound on page 391, which is a presentation from the county manager in regards to a potential bid to J.D. Goodrum Company. Supplemental information from the county manager on the adoption of the budget tonight, as well as the Parks Department, and removal of the closed session found as L1. With those amendments, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as provided?
Mr. Chairman, I've got one addition under recognitions. We have a present, a plaque to be presented to us from the WASAC board that I would like to present, and this added is item four under recognitions.
So that would be under C4?
Make a motion we approve with that addition.
Okay, so what we have is a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of C4, which is a presentation, a recognition and presentation involving WASAC.
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have is the recognitions and presentations. If we'll go to C1, which is the Cooperative Extension, Ordinary Women, Extraordinary Service. At this point in time, I would call on Mrs. Joyce Klutz. Oh, Mrs. Klutz is not here. Mrs. Ooten, Mrs. Wickliffe, if y'all please come up.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. The Family and Consumer Science Program of North Carolina Cooperative Extension is celebrating its centennial this year. The centennial celebration was kicked off in Raleigh on May 25th at the Jane S. McKinnon Center, and we were real pleased that Commissioner Loesheimer was able to attend, and State Senator Fletcher Hartzell was able to join the thirty Carreras Family and Consumer Science friends and supporters in Raleigh. And tonight, I am joined by two of our outstanding leaders, Pat Wickliffe and Barbara Looney, and they have just, they are tremendous leaders, and were part of our delegation at the celebration on May 25th. Originally called Home Demonstration, the program has evolved into Home Economics and now Family and Consumer Sciences. There are many programs and services that we take for granted today that were started or supported by Home Demonstration, and two of those programs are the Hot School Lunch Program, and Libraries, and Bookmobiles. The Women's Program to Improve Children's Diets in the 1930s was implemented by Home Demonstration Club women actually making and delivering hot lunches to rural schools, and that effort was the forerunner of school cafeterias. In the 1950s, the club women led the way in fighting illiteracy in the state. They lobbied county commissioners and raised money to make books more available in rural areas through libraries and bookmobiles. There is no better tribute to women's desire for learning than the Jane S. McKinnon Center in Raleigh. The women helped build this building by collecting their butter and egg money, and in 1966, $100,000 was donated as the seed money for the statewide education center. We are still very much alive and well, and we just look forward to another hundred years, which I'll speak around in just a few minutes. But as we celebrate the past, a three-hundred-page history book entitled "Ordinary Women, Extraordinary Service" was written and unveiled at the celebration. And the book gives a decade-by-decade history of family and consumer sciences in North Carolina, and features a page about each county. And as you look through the book, you're going to find six pictures of Carreras County women in action. These books were financed by private donations from individuals and civic clubs across North Carolina, including our local St. John's Grange and the Mount Pleasant Lions Club. We've already provided a book to each Carreras County and Kannapolis School Library, their school board members, and our Carreras libraries. It is our pleasure tonight to officially present a book to our Carreras County Commissioners, County Manager, Assistant County Manager, and Assistant County Managers. We look forward to many more years of working together as a team with experts from NC State University and NCANT State University, extension agents, and most importantly, ECA volunteers to improve the family through programs that educate, influence public policy, and help families put research-based knowledge to work. And at this time, we would like to present the books. And Pat and Barbara are going to help in this endeavor.
Thank you very much. I know that it's been very important. I have some family members that were involved in ECA, many, many, well, actually wasn't ECA when they were involved, but it's been very important to them, and I will certainly let them know about the book, but thank you very much. The next matter we have is on C2, the Carreras Arena and Event Center, Carreras County Schools' Youth Art Month Program. At this time, I call on Mr. Frank Lapsley.
Thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to come back and visit with you. Very quickly, we wanted to update you on a program that we started earlier this year on your behalf. March is the Youth Art Month for Carreras County Schools. Pam Saussman, one of our coworkers out at the arena, spearheaded an effort to work with the school systems. We displayed over sixty pieces of artwork for that month throughout the arena complex in different areas, in the Carreras rooms, in the arena, and the event center. Part of our negotiations with the school system is that we told them we'd like to be part of an ongoing program in which we can acquire artwork for the arena. As you can imagine, we have almost limitless wall space to put up artwork. We worked very hard, and we, on your behalf, we have begun a program in which we are going to take a piece of artwork from each of the grade levels, or from each of the school levels, elementary, middle, and high school. We will call it the Commissioner's Select Award. We will hang them in the arena this year. I think we're going to hang them in the Gold Hall, so that during the fair, they'll get the most amount of exposure by our local residents to see what the schoolchildren in our community were able to do. So if you will allow us, we'd like to show you the three pieces of art that we selected. I want to introduce first to you Sarah Starkle. Sarah is a senior, or was a senior, congratulations, at Central Carreras High School, and she wants to show you Chasing Shadows.
Okay, well, this is my art piece. It's oil pastel. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the media. It's like a crayon, but oily. You can smear it. I did it on black paper. It's actually me.
If you have one moment, you can move that microphone down, and we can hear you just so much better.
Okay.
And everybody else can hear you. Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's great. So it's what kind of media is it?
Oil pastel.
Okay.
And it smears like a cray, like, it's like a crayon, but with oil instead of wax. And it's actually me, but I'm not usually into abstraction, but it's my abstract piece.
That is great. It's a beautiful piece of work.
Thank you.
Turn around. Turn around.
Unfortunately, our two other winners couldn't be with us. It's June, and due to summer breaks and other family commitments, they couldn't be here. But Pam and I want to show you the other two pieces of artworks that were winners. This is from Diana Perez. She is an eighth grader at J.N. Freese Middle School. It's called "In the Night," and she used oil paints.
Wow.
This one is from a fourth grader at Carl Fur, Michelle Ann Spires, and this is called Cherry Blossoms and Nature. It is with India ink, crayon, and marker. So when you come out to the fair this fall, you will see these pieces of artwork hanging, and from year to year, you will start to see us collect artwork on your behalf.
If you can show everybody here that, so they can, oop. Oop. Good job. Thank you. Sarah, before you get away, where are you heading to school next year?
I'm not sure yet. I'm actually probably going to go to the workforce.
Good. Okay, well, welcome. Good luck, and I hope you keep up with the artwork.
Thank you.
Next, we have is C3, is the Transportation Annual North Carolina Public Transportation Association Rodeo and Conference. Mr. Bushy.
Thank you. Carreras County Transportation is a member of the North Carolina Public Transportation Association. Each year, they have a conference and rodeo event down in Wilmington, North Carolina. The rodeo consists of three parts with a timed obstacle course, wheelchair securement, and a written safety test. This year, we sent two of our employees down to compete in the contest, and we are pleased to announce out of the ninety-three counties competing, our very own Annette Barnett came in third place and brought this trophy back to Carreras County.
Good job. Annette, tell me, how much is the competition? How many people were there?
Um, well, there's like three different divisions. There's vans, and then there's the twenty-two footers, the bigger vans that we have, and then there's buses. Within the vans, there were like nineteen of us, and it's just a course set up with the cones, and you have to go through them without hitting a lot of the cones.
Well, thank you very much. You did a great job. Next, we have is C4. Commissioner Carruth asked to be put on is WASAC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past week at our WASAC meeting, we were notified that WASAC has met the requirements for ISO 14001 designation certification, which is environmental management programs, and they met that in the category of obviously water treatment, wastewater treatment and collections. The, so we have received a copy of the certificate that we can post in the county offices here since we are a member, one of the founding members of WASAC, and I'll pass this down to everyone. And one of the things that was announced as well, because several months ago, WASAC achieved the North Carolina Star designation for the Department of Labor for their safety program. Understand that WASAC is the only independent utility in the state that has achieved both of these designations. So congratulations to that organization, continues to do a fine job for our county.
So what is the ISO 14001? What does that mean?
It means they have meet the best practices in environmental management, is an international standard.
That's a very good accomplishment. We certainly appreciate everything that Mr. Keeter and everybody at the staff does out there. Next, we have is informal public comments, and I have a number of cards. Some of the cards are addressing our budget. You can certainly come up and talk now for three minutes, or you can wait until our budget time to talk at the budget, to talk at that point in time, to be more particular on that point. I'll still call your name out to make certain you want to speak now, or do you want to speak at the budget. So I wanted to let you know, there is one that is on our consent agenda, so before we get to the consent agenda, I certainly want to call up this person. That is Mrs. Annette Tolles Young. Mrs. Young, and this is, if you'll please announce where you're from, where you live, and what you want to talk about, if you can come on up, ma'am, and you can move that speaker down if you'd prefer.
Good evening. My name is Annette Tolles Young. I'm a resident of Harrisburg, president of the Board of Directors of the Carreras County Council on Aging, and also a member of the Advisory Board of the Department of Aging. Recently moved here, well, about four years ago, from Houston, Texas, and I've been quite delighted at the progress that I see in this particular area of the country. And I'm speaking to that in concerning, concerning the ordinance that you have, I believe, before you this evening concerning parks, them being smoke-free and tobacco products-free. Do thank you for this opportunity to speak briefly in support of the passage of the ordinance that would create this non-smoking and other tobacco products-free county parks. I wish to encourage you to proceed with a unified resolve in establishing this type of strong safeguard for our parks' environment. Enacting this ordinance will benefit the health of current generations, as well as those yet to be born. You have my personal support and the support of many other senior citizens who are your voting constituents in Carreras County. We desire safe and healthy park facilities for ourselves, our children, our grandchildren, as well as all others who make use of the services and recreation offered at the county's parks. Thank you very much. Do know, senior citizens want nice parks.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. The next person that we have, they have a card from, is Mr. David Binstone. Mr. Binstone, I understand you want to talk about the budget.
Mike, wait until the budget question.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Long?
Same.
Mr. Skaggs?
Same.
Thank you. Mrs. Poppin?
Same.
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence?
I'll go ahead and address you now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. If you'll tell us where you're from, and what item specifically you want to talk about.
Specifically, I would like to argue against the proposed fire tax increase for the Odell Fire District. My name is Patrick Lawrence, and I'm speaking against the fire tax increase for the Odell Fire Tax District in which I live. I was on the Board of Directors of the Odell Fire Department for nearly twenty years, serving most of that time as secretary and treasurer. The people I am debating with are friends of mine. However, in this case, we have a major philosophical disagreement, that being taxes and the use of public money. Additionally, I was treasurer at the time this proposal was presented to the board, and yet I was not consulted at all. This is not about fire protection. In the case of an actual major structure fire, which are rare, there are mutual aid calls to other departments. We have ample volunteers to get trucks moving. Also, there are two paid, part-time persons to cover daytime hours during the week. When I purchased my home, the decision was based on location in a rural area and low tax rates. I knew the area was served by a volunteer fire department. The homeowners, the cost of my homeowner's insurance was not a factor. That was my decision, and it remains my decision. The commission does not need to try to manage the cost of my homeowner's insurance. Financially, this would add an enormous fixed cost to operate the fire department. Currently, there's a $160,000 annual cost for principal and interest on a $2 million loan for the new station and property. If you add paid staffing costing $300,000 a year, that amounts to nearly a half a million dollars annual fixed cost. From business standpoint, this is a major problem. Taking this step will triple the fixed cost of operation. Adding a two-cent tax increase will not cover the operating cost, the increase in cost in operating. I believe that future tax increases will be required to continue operation as pay raises are sought, new equipment and vehicles needed, and we discover all the hidden costs of this proposal. The argument that insurance rates will decrease because we have a full-time department is sheer speculation. All departments must meet strict equipment, training, and response time numbers for a minimum of three years of performance to make any insurance adjustment. In my opinion, this is about a jobs program for off-duty firefighters in an effort to deter the city of Kannapolis from building a station in the area. That will result in the loss of contract funds to the department. In the case of the jobs program, it would be fully funded by the taxpayers of the Odell Fire Tax District, yet the bulk of the money would go to persons living outside the district. The county has no business creating the jobs program for off-duty firefighters, nor trying to determine what the city of Kannapolis wants to do with their money. Clearly, your vote for this tax increase will demonstrate your lack of confidence in our volunteer fire department. I believe we will spend more and more to provide the same services that we get now with our great volunteer staff. I recommend you give careful consideration to this expensive, risky program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Next is Mr. Lonnie Seaford. You want to speak now, Mr. Seaford, or at the time, at the budget?
I will head to speak now.
Okay. If you'll announce and tell us where you're, where you live, and what you're talking about.
I'm Lonnie Seaford, and I am on the Board of Directors at Odell Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Mr. Lawrence and I have had many, many discussions and worked together, and I respect Mr. Lawrence, and I'm here speaking in favor of the Odell budget as proposed. The additional funds that we're seeking will allow us to have staffing twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and that will be two to three full-time people on staff. And we're not trying to take anything away from our volunteers. We've got a great group of volunteers. What we're trying to do is get equipment moving immediately. As all of you know, volunteers, and the amount of volunteers that show up is not like it used to be some years ago, when we had people working in the community and dropped their work and run to the station. We've been fortunate at Odell, and we've got a couple workhorses that have been getting the truck out and getting things moving, but as we proceed forward, we don't see that trend continuing as some of our volunteers age on out. And we have a great group of volunteers, but these additional funds will be used to place people at the station, which can respond to calls immediately. So I think this will definitely benefit the residents. Certainly, it will benefit them some in terms of homeowner's insurance cost reduction in future time periods. We're not saying that next month, because we do this, that's going to be reflected in your homeowner's fire insurance. That'll only take place after we get some ISO ratings, which we anticipate being done in the next year. So we thank you, and hope you'll approve the operating budget for Odell for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That is all the cards that I have. At this time, we do not have any old business to attend to. We do have the consent agenda. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion granted. Next, we have is new business, is the adoption of the fiscal year 2012 Carreras County Budget in public hearing on page 262. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, I'm Erica Nesbit, the Budget and Performance Manager for the county. By July 1st of each year, the governing board of the county is required to adopt a budget ordinance with appropriations and a tax levy that the board finds sufficient and proper for the operations of the county. On May 16th, the county manager presented his recommended budget, then subsequent budget workshops were held to receive additional information and modify the budget as needed. In your agenda packet for tonight are budget ordinances for your approval. The first ordinance reflects a county budget of $214,872,987 in revenues and expenses in all funds. This includes a no change in the current tax rate of 63 cents per $100 valuation of The fire, the fire tax and insurance ordinance provides the tax rates and appropriations for the various tax, for the various fire districts. And the capital improvement ordinance provides approval, provides a list of approved capital projects and revenue sources for the upcoming fiscal year. Each ordinance is consistent with the actions taken by the board at the budget workshops. At this time, or following the public hearing, staff or I will be more than happy to address any questions that you may have regarding the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to open this up for the public hearing. We do have some cards. I'd like to call on those persons first, and at this time, I'd call on Mr. David Binstone to, if you'll please, give us your address, and certainly you're talking about the budget, if you'll say if you're asking, talking about it for or against, and then tell us what your position is.
I have some general comments about it, and my name is David Venkson. I live in the Odell area, and I appreciate you giving us the time to speak to you about the budget. I'm a business owner, taxpayer, voter, neighbor, father. Earlier this month, I attended the Board of Education, one of their, one of their meetings, and at that meeting, in this particular section, the architect was talking, he was given a review of some of the construction projects that are going on with the school system. And he said that at this time, some of those projects are under budget. And one of the Board of Education members interrupted him and said, "If those projects finish under budget, can we spend the money?" And the architect thought about it for a moment, and then came back and said, "Well, yes, we can increase the scope of work or issue other projects to use up that money." The board member then said, "Great, that's all I need to know," and sat back down in his chair. And I tell you, I was appalled at that comment. I find it insulting as a taxpayer, that there would be such a callous attitude towards our money, and I think this is one of the reasons why you've had difficulty, so much difficulty, cutting the budget, that you had to come to us for a quarter-cent tax increase in order to balance the budget. And it's also a classic addiction to OPM, like the drug, but other people's money. When you take money from us, the taxpayers, there are consequences, and I want to share some of those consequences with you tonight. As I said, I'm a small business owner. 2009, we saw the economy begin to go down. At the time, we had eleven employees. My partner and I saw the economy begin to slow down, so we cut our salaries first. Then- Then, as it continued to decline, our sales went down. We wrote checks into the company out of pocket to cover the payroll for those 11 employees. As the economy continued to decrease, we realized we couldn't do that any longer, so we had to let nine of them go. So me and my partner are the only ones left in the company. The people that we let go, we hire and we pay a premium for the people that we have. You want to work for my company. We provide outstanding health care. We provide vacation retirement benefits. All of those were gone for those nine people that we had to lay off because of the economy, and a reason for that is the high taxes that we have in this state. Personally, because I said, "We cut my salary," my family had to cut our personal budget over 30%. 30% came out of our pocket. Okay? Now, we didn't have a choice. I couldn't go to my clients and raise the cost of my services. They buy what they buy, and right now, they're not buying. Okay? So we had to cut. Now, I've sat in on some of your budget workshops. I also sat in on some of the meetings with the school board, and I've reviewed it. In fact, you've got a spreadsheet with some of the findings that me and some other people came up with. Just want to mention a couple of them. First is we're buying Toyota Priuses for the inspection department.
If you can wrap, start wrapping it up. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to buy a new car for me. I can't. Mine's got 250,000 miles on it. I'm going to put a new engine in and drive it for another couple of years. The IT department has 21 full-time equivalent employees. Couple of weeks ago, in this meeting, you rolled out or had a sneak peek of that. The person who was doing the presentation said you had been working on that for a year and a half. A year and a half is insane in this economy to roll out a new, a new website. Now, I'll wrap up. I've got some others, but I'm out of time. Because you're using other people's money, I'm another person. These are other people. You throw up your hands and say, "We've cut all we can." I can't do that as a private citizen or as a business owner. I have to make my expenses match my income, and you guys have to start doing the same thing. You can't go and say, "Oh, we're going to raise taxes," because those of us, the other people, we're out of money, and it means you guys are too. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Next we have is Mr. Ronnie Long.
Good evening, Chairman White, members of the Board, Commissioners, guests. My name is Ronnie Long. I live here in Concord on Wood, in, on Brownwood Lane. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you tonight. As some of you know, I'm the president of the local Tea Party Group, We the People, here in Cabarrus County. On behalf of our membership, I would first like to thank each of you for your service to our community. Your job here is sometimes misunderstood, and at the very least, one which most average citizens do not totally understand. Most of us do not know all the things you're involved in or faced with on a daily basis. We do know that you are challenged by many issues on a regular basis, which require you to make some very difficult decisions, and in some cases, decisions which may not be most popular. You are to be commended for the work you do regardless of the outcome of those decisions. I would like to now address one of those, and that being the upcoming 2012 five-year projected budget. I've had the distinct pleasure of attending all of your budget workshops and seeing this board in action. I must say that it has been one of the most educational endeavors I have undertaken in quite some time. While I will be the first to admit that this board has worked hard to hold down the cost of governing Cabarrus County, I would respectfully challenge you to do more. The citizens of this county are having to make some hard financial decisions this year, and in many cases, have had to do so for the last several years. We're faced with reducing our expenses at every turn, and many have lost their jobs and their ability to provide for their families entirely. We, the people, now call upon those in the public sector to do the same. I'll be the first to say that we must protect the jobs of our teachers, firefighters, and law enforcement officers every way we possibly can. I will be the last to ask for any of their jobs to be eliminated as a way to reduce spending. Unfortunately, reduction of spending is what must be done because of the hard economic times we all face. Please hear me clearly. I do not encourage the loss of any of their jobs. Having seen what goes on in your budget workshops, I would call upon you to consider the following three challenges. First, freeze-all county spending at the 2010 budget level for the next five years. You know what revenues you had to work with, and will not be working on a guesstimate or projections of what might be coming. Second, challenge every department head to reduce their department's spending by 10% every year for the next five years, starting immediately. Please don't tell me that cannot be done. It comes down to the difference of not wanting to versus not having to. We are currently faced with the fact that we must reduce our spending, and it must be done now. Any department head worth what we're paying them should be capable of a 10% departmental cost reduction, or we seriously need to consider someone else to run that department. Seriously consider, number three, and I'll wrap this up. Seriously consider privatizing as many functions of our current system as possible. If there are companies listed in the phone book who can perform any of the functions any department or any persons in a department are currently doing, then I encourage you to put out a request for qualifications and/or requests for bids to determine if those functions can be done more economically by business in the private sector. On behalf of the more than 1,000 citizens who are part of the We the People NC, and those who closely identify with our goals and ideals of less expensive government and lower taxes, we would like to thank you for your hard work and considerations of our ideas for reducing spending, preventing any additional taxation, and need to raise property taxes as proposed in your projected budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Next I have is Mr. Bob Skaggs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. I'm here this evening representing the residents of Harrisburg. I'm here to convert, convey my deep concern regarding several items. The first of these items that concerns me deeply is the support of this board in honoring the agreement with the town of Harrisburg to keep the fire tax rates equal for the district served, and not to have municipal residents subsidizing the county residents, specifically the Harrisburg Fire District within the county but outside of the city limits of Harrisburg. The second item of concern is one that, in my opinion, carries more concern than any And that is the difficulty of our respective boards have had communicating regarding this matter. We, the Town Council of Harrisburg, have sent numerous emails with no response from our mayor, our council, our staff. We've left voicemail messages, as well as text messages, that have gone unanswered for many of the board members. As elected officials and governing bodies of shared districts, we have a responsibility and an obligation to those we represent to communicate and operate as a team and not as adversaries. Four years ago, when I was elected to my first term on the Harrisburg Town Council, I came over here to this board and spoke to you regarding my excitement and my enthusiasm for fostering an environment of open communication and partnership in our respective boards. I stand here today disheartened by the level of communication with the elected officials of the town of Harrisburg concerning our request for a tax levy. One of your members whom we grateful, whom we were grateful to have, has sat in on our council meetings on many occasions, interacted with our board at the land use planning meetings, and many other functions, and we have not yet seen a return to email, phone call, or text message to our mayor. If the board has a compelling reason not to honor our request for a tax increase that's justified and centered in a concern by the citizens represented in the Harrisburg Fire District, then we should be sitting down to talk about those concerns as a team and not closing the doors of communication with the representatives of the residents of Harrisburg. I'll conclude my comments this evening with a last request, that you approve the fire tax levy increase sought by the town of Harrisburg and its citizens in order to maintain an equal fire tax rate for the entire fire district served equally by the Harrisburg Fire Department. I'll also read into the record an email by a concerned resident outside the municipal district of Harrisburg but in the county district, if you'll permit me.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This comes from Laura Carricker of Harrisburg. I feel very strongly about which I am about to write, and I felt the urgency to correspond prior to your budget hearing tonight. Therefore, please excuse the haste in which I write. I am aware of the budgetary woes of all levels of government in these dire economic times, and as so many citizens, I worry about my financial future. As everyone else, I'm loath to pay taxes, but understand they are a necessary evil when we are to enjoy the things we do as free citizens of these beloved United States. One of the necessary services provided by municipalities is police and fire protection, among many other vital services. In Harrisburg, we are privileged to have one of the best fire departments in the county. It was a great volunteer operation and now is under the management of the town of Harrisburg, continuing to provide area residents both in and out of the town limits with emergency response and fire protection. I am aware that certain assessment and ratings influence homeowners' insurance rates. Fortunately, Harrisburg has historically been rated high, thus saving me and other residents money in our insurance. As a resident, I also value the quick response to an emergency. If budgetary cuts force a reduction in staffing, it will have serious impact on response time and efficiency. I would hate to be in a crisis situation with an ill or injured loved one or a burning house, counting the minutes while waiting for first responders or fire protection. Without adequate staffing and equipment, it might come to an either-or situation when responding. Would you want to be the number two in a situation like that? I sure wouldn't. There is a waste, there is waste in various entities that should be evaluated and dealt with. There are certain areas where spending can be trimmed. Public safety is not one of them. As a citizen of the Cabarrus County and a 40-year resident of the greater Harrisburg area and married to a lifetime resident, I hope you'll take my concerns to heart when evaluating budget cuts and allotments. Thank you for your service to our county. I'm sure you have difficult decisions to make. I appreciate the job you all do to help make Cabarrus County the great place it is to call home. Regards, Laura Carricker. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Poppin, and I come to you from the Harrisburg Town Council. And tonight, I represent the Town Council and the mayor and the citizens of Harrisburg. Mayor Tim Hagler could not be here tonight due to a work commitment. He brings me here to read a message from him. Dear Commissioners, as mayor of the town of Harrisburg, I am respectfully asking you to strongly reconsider your position on our request to increase our rural district fire tax levy, 2%, 2 cents, I'm sorry, 2 cents. Our request will serve minimally three purposes. First, we will be able to continue to service our residents with the same level of fire protection as we have historically in both the inside and outside of Harrisburg. Secondly, we will not have to lay off firemen, placing our citizens' property and firemen at such greater, at much greater risk, and yet, we will protect our ISO rating, which keeps our citizens' and residents' insurance rates much lower. And lastly, we want to make sure that the inside and outside of Harrisburg residents are paying the same rate for fire protection. In fiscal year 2012, the inside residents will be paying 2 cents more than rural residents for the exact same service. We do not believe this is fair to insist that Harrisburg inside residents subsidize services for outside residents. Please take into account that we are not requesting our increase to build new stations, hire more employees, or purchase capital equipment, but our request is to maintain our current fire department. We do not want to cut staff, close departments, minimize mutual aid, or reduce current response times. All of our firemen are true first responders and all EMT-trained and can administer medicinal treatments that have saved lives repeatedly. We do not want to lose the capability to save lives in our community. The bottom line is that we have operated at a high level of efficiency and success for five years without any increases, but overcame shortfalls each year with deep cuts, deferments, and absorption by other funds. Unfortunately, we are not able to absorb any additional shortfalls due to the inadequate tax rates. The mayor, councilmember, staff, and residents of the town of Harrisburg are asking you again to please strongly reconsider your decision to help fund a mandated service that we have successfully provided for both the county and town residents by granting us a 2 cents rural district tax levy increase. Respectfully, Timothy B. Hagler, Mayor of Harrisburg. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's all I have in regards to cards. Anybody else want to speak for or against the budget that has been presented? I'll close the public hearing. We have the budget before us, and I think that, to make it a little bit cleaner, if we could look at the Cabarrus County Budget Ordinance fiscal year 2011, 2012. That's found on page 266 of our agenda. Is there any questions for Mrs. Nesbit or Mrs. Dubois as it relates to it? I thought that our sessions, we had three sessions plus a work session. All five of us were in agreement with the budget as it was presented, and I wanted to make certain if there's any questions for Mrs. Nesbit and Mrs. Dubois at this point in time. Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the...
Mr. Chairman, I do have one point out. I think it's on page G1, which is 268 in our agenda book. Mr. Data, this is what we were talking about coming into the meeting a long ago. There's a, under Workers' Comp Fund.
268?
Yeah, 268.
Okay.
If you look under item B, under the Workers' Comp Fund, it says the following appropriations are made in the 911 Emergency Telephone Fund. I think it's the, should that not read, Workers' Comp Fund.
That's right in the middle of the page.
Right in the middle of the page. Yeah, there was a...
That would be correct. We need, we'll fix that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget. And then if we get a second, then I'll have some points you'd like to make in relation to that.
Do we have, and this is for the budget ordinance...
For the budget ordinance as presented to us.
For the Cabarrus County Budget Ordinance fiscal year 2011, 2012. This is not a vote on the fire tax districts at this time. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any comments or discussions? Mr. McRue?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd like, first of all, I went through and a couple, few things, just a few comments to make. And first of all, I want to applaud We the People for the work that they have done this year in getting involved in our budget process. We've had, in 11 years I've been on this board, we've had many times where we've had very little interest in the budget as it was being presented and as we were discussing it. And it was good to get this year, to get a fresh perspective, another set of eyes on it. I wanted to look at several things, though, and I know there's some suggestions that were made, and I want to point these out to our board, that first of all, the first thing is this budget is almost 9% lower than last year's budget, 2010, 2012. So what this, the cost is lower this year in spite of some additions that we have made to the budget. So there have been some significant cuts made in some of our expenditures, some of the departmental expenditures this year already. I've heard the thing of returning to the 2010 spending levels that, and I went back and looked at our 2010 spending levels, compared it, you can basically go straight down and look at it line by line, department by department. There is a $13 million increase from the 2010 budget to this year's budget, and I found that almost 100% of the increases come from three items. New debt service for our schools, new debt service for the Public Safety Center, which is across the street here, and staffing for the detention center that's contained in that center. If we returned to those levels, we would basically, one thing, we'd waste money by not opening the completed jail, because we would not have the staffing available for that. We would have to cut from other programs to cover the debt service payments. And I've found that some programs are actually, in 2012, are actually less than they were in 2010. So it's kind of, how do we return to that? Do we return, if we do that, we're going to end up increasing some of the budgets over what they are this year. I hear a lot in the community, too, about the incentives. And I looked at that, and we've got $1.3 million this year going out in incentive payments. And if you look at our budget, and of course, those incentive payments are not made until the company that is in agreement with the county has paid 100% of their taxes, is audited by our tax department. It comes out to 0.7% of our budget. It comes out to 0.7% of our budget. And in this time, when we are looking at the fact that we've lost two, in the last 10 years, two major segments of our tax base were Pilatex and Philip Morris, which means that today, unlike 10 years ago, we have a tremendous portion of our tax base is on our residential property owners. I think that 0.7% of our budget is, to me, a good investment to get more commercial and more non-residential development and investment in the community. With our debt, we have 22.8% of that of our budget is going to debt service this year. That is high. I'd agree, almost all of it is school debt. We are actually, this year, will pay off Lake Howl, which was first built 20 years ago. So, we will now completely own that free and clear. And I was noticed that by 2016, in the budget projections, we will drop to a little over 20% debt service. In fact, there's a lot of debt service dropping, you know, if you look at our five-year financial plan. In fact, outside of the QSCAB bonds we just issued, and the contributions to Kannapolis for the redevelopment of their downtown area, there are no other increases. We have frozen the budget and frozen spending at the 2012 levels. I know that a lot of people have also looked at the 2013 tax rate, projected tax rate on our five-year plan, and I think this is, it's going to be wholly dependent on how a revow turns out. We've got to look very carefully at what revenue neutral means for us next year and make sure the public understands what revenue neutral means. I think that we ought to determine the least impact as possible on our residents. I think that over this next year, we have the opportunity, because if we go, don't go with a revenue-neutral tax rate, I believe there's a $13 million difference in our budget next year. That's not buying three pens rather than four, or four Post-it pads rather than five. That's strategically changing the role and scope of the county government in the county. And I think that's something that, community-wide, the community needs to be involved in, those discussions about how we would approach that going into next year. Because I agree with some speakers here tonight, that the, with everybody having to cut their own budgets, that that, we should be doing, trying to do the same thing. But I'll point out, as I pointed out in our last meeting, is that we're not Raleigh in where we can push down, you know, our spending and shift cost of our programs to a lower level of government, and we're not Washington DC where we all have to do is call the Federal Reserve and they'll print us a new batch of money to cover our debt. We have to pay it. We have to provide the services here locally, and unfortunately, the buck stops here. So, but the, I think we've got to have some honest, frank discussions with the public this next year about where do we want to go and what do we want to do? And if there's strategic changes that need to be made, we need to be leading, be, lead the charge in how we're going to do that. Also, I think the other thing that came up was that, and there's been a lot of nationwide said about this, about public employees making more than private sector employees. And I think the suggestion was made to, I looked at, I think, cut our, all our payroll by 8% across the board. You know, the public may not realize that we do have a periodic salary and position classification review that we do, in which we actually look at the positions, look at the comparative pay, and I don't recall, I believe, on this board that we've had the positions where we've been overpaying people in our county government. In fact, there's some positions more technical where we have actually tried to be slightly above-market because we want the best talent we can get in those positions. But that, through that salary and classification study, it's our accountability that we're not getting out of range and we're not getting out of whack, I think, where the public is at. So, with those comments, and I'll say that this is a form of motion.
Commissioner Mead?
First, I'd like to say that I'm going to have to respectfully vote against the budget. I have several reasons for doing, for doing that. First, my first point, an argument that I would like to, to touch on is, falls back to our retreat that we had the end of January, February. The discussion was whether or not we were going to freeze the spending. And at that time, I expressed my interest, or I expressed my opinion, that we should freeze the spending from last year's level. We're giving revenue increases to RCCC, the school system, the Health Alliance, and the COLA, which is the cost-of-a-living adjustment. And, you know, I certainly understand that we have, you know, hard-working county employees and staff that, you know, work diligently and really do an excellent job for us. However, in the private sector, there's no, very few people are receiving pay increases at this time. Very few people are receiving cost-of-a-living adjustments. I certainly would enjoy having that as well, but it doesn't happen that way in the private sector, and I think that's something that is costing almost $1 million that we could forego. And the purpose of wanting to hold the revenues off at last year's level is, next year, when reevaluation comes in and it comes in much lower, we're going to have a pretty tough year next year. And to increase revenues this year, we're going to have to maintain that for next year budget and potentially may have to go in and cut. So, I think it would be responsible to, to hold the spending off at last year's level so next year, we potentially will not have to go in and cut, or, you know, perhaps it'll turn out a little bit better for us. I know the fire taxes will touch on that a little, little bit, so I'll forego that. Also, I express my opinions about the flexibility and the spending between the school system and the Health Alliance, and I think there's inconsistencies there where we granted flexibility to the Health Alliance and we did not grant flexibility to the school system. So, for those being conflicting, I would have to, as I said, respectfully vote against the budget.
Commissioner Burge?
Well, I'm going to have to vote against it, too. Number one, we got to, we got to figure out another way to raise revenue other than taxing the citizens of Cabarrus County. They're pretty well taxed out now. Taxes are too high. They should be, instead of being raised, they should be decreased. I thought at our retreat that we all agreed to stick with the 210 budget until somebody come along and want to give one group their money and nobody else theirs, and I thought that was totally unfair. You know, you've got to treat people right, and to pull one group out and say, "We're going to give them their money, but we're not going to give anybody else theirs." That's just totally wrong when the group that was going to get the money was already getting almost half of the budget to start with. So, I just say that, you know, we ought to, we ought to re-figure what we're doing and think about the people out there working. Jobs are bad. There are not any jobs out there for people to be working. The economy's not getting any better. If you're the every economist you talk to right now, or you listen to, if you talk to anybody outside of Washington DC, things are not going to get better until 2014, if by then. So, I can't see putting any increases in any kind of taxes on anybody at this time.
Vice Chair Poole?
I just want to mention, there was a comment about the schools being able to spend more. They can't, if theirs comes in under budget, they don't do any other projects that have already been approved. So, whatever they were told would be incorrect. They can do the projects that were approved. That was specific funds, very much audited funds, to make sure the projects go where they are, or the money goes in those projects. Now, if Project A is $1,000 more than what they projected, and Project B is $1,000 less, they can move $1,000 to keep the same projects going. But they can't come back and say, and them decide that they're just going to do something completely different and new that was never on the list. So, I want to dispel that. The budget is lower. There's a cut in the budget this year versus last year. And we keep going round and round of, is it lower, is it not lower? What I saw was 8-point-some percent, a little under 9%. So, there is a decrease in the budget. I do agree that next year's going to be a tougher budget, and that was the reason for not doing flexibility for the school system this year so they would have flexibility next year when they're going to take a $5.5 million hit on their budget. What, Commissioner Mead, what you proposed would be not funding them an additional $800,000 this year to Cabarrus County schools, which in essence was the flexibility they asked for. So, they would get a double whammy. I'm not certain why we would do flexibility and not the other, but this does give some flexibility if they ask for it for next year. They may or may not. The feedback we got at the budget meeting was that their funding from the state was better than they had originally projected. Instead of a 10% decrease, it was more like a little under 6, I think. So, they, they should, the feedback I got was that they should be okay for this year, but next year is the year that they are much more concerned about. And this is just on the regular budget, budget ordinance. I would also speak about the fire tax when we get to that.
Okay. Well, we have the budget before us. Couple of things that, at our budget meeting, that I wanted to bring up is, one of the things we're talking about is purchasing Toyota Priuses and some, and as I understand it, is, and also privatization. Many of the times that we have those issues that come up, that's an analysis that is done to determine, is it cheaper to do it in that specific area as opposed to contracting out? And in regards to the Toyota Priuses, that came in less if we purchased them as opposed to having to pay mileage. In regards to privatizing, some of these other issues, we always look at that, and that's one of the things that we look at and see, what is the cost-benefit analysis and can it be done cheaper? And in the instances that it can be done cheaper, it is, it is done that way. In regards to the website, the staff that was working on it was not working on it 40 hours a week, every week of the year, for a year and a half. That position started at its two-person position and cut, and that person, one of the persons was let go. So, that, that was not a full-time position for a year and a half. That was a part-time position for a year and a half. So, that, that is answering to that regards. In regards to some of these questions about, or not questions, but some of these concerns, it concerns me that we are at the 11th hour, and the concerns are raised about spending or giving monies to RCCC, increases to RCCC, increases to the Cabarrus Health Alliance, with no specifics as to what cuts would be made. We had three budget sessions, and we had a work session that we talked about specifically about the Health Alliance. And nothing was brought up in regards to the cuts. And that's what's frustrating, is that at each one of the budget meetings, at the end of the budget meeting, everybody's okay. At day one, everybody was okay. At day two, everybody was okay. At day three, everybody's okay at the work session. And we come tonight on the 11th hour, and we have just general ideas of, I don't like it. Commissioner Burge, you are correct, is that at the retreat, we did talk about freezing monies at 2010, and one of the commissioners said that, you're right, that they only wanted freezing for everybody except for one department. And you raised it, and you said, "That's not fair. If you're going to freeze it for one, you freeze it for everybody. If you're going to freeze it for three, you freeze it for all four or five," however many it is. It's not fair. And based on your concerns, as well as individuals' concerns, it was then, it was then discussed, and I believe it was voted on at our meeting, regular meeting, following that recess, and it was a 5-0 vote that we were going to freeze it at fiscal year 2011. Or fiscal, well, '12, you're right. But you're right, you did bring that up. The budget that we have before us tonight is not a tax increase. It's 63 cents, just like it is yesterday, and it was there's last year. So, there's not a tax increase, and that any number that increase is in the, looking at it next year as potentially for revenue neutral. So, if this budget passes tonight, it is not an increase of taxes for this year. And there is a mandate to staff that when we start this process again in November this year, that it's supposed to, the, the spending is supposed to stay at 2011. And I do think that, that one of the things that we need to look at is, when we look at reducing, if we were to look at reducing 10% for each department under the mandated services, that would increase the 10% for another service. For instance, if it is a mandated service, is a mandated price, we can't cut that 10%. So, that 10% has to be generated at another place. And you can shake your head, "No, Mr. Long," but that's the fact. And what we're looking at now is, if we were to cut next year, for instance, if one of the, one of the suggestions is, well, we don't need the level of service that's being provided by the Health Department. We need to be very serious about what we're doing there because now we're looking at health outbreaks, and if we reduce funding for those services, what are we, what does that mean? And I think that's discussions, healthy discussions that we need to have from this board. So, with that, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion pa, no, motion is granted, 3-2. Next matter we have, I'll turn everybody's attention to... I believe that covers... Let me see here. I think that we're next would be the special fire tax. Is that correct, Mrs. Nesbit? Okay. Now, that, I turn everybody's attention to page 271. Now, what I want to be certain about is, when we had our work sessions, we had Northeast come to us, we had Odell come to us, we had Mount Pleasant, and we had Harrisburg. I believe that is the four fire districts that asked for an increase. Now, at our work sessions, it was, the consensus was to approve the tax increase for Northeast, and that was an increase of...
1 cent.
1 cent. And for Odell, there was a consensus to pass to increase 2 cents. They asked for 3, they came back and asked for 2. And in regards to Mount Pleasant and to Harrisburg, that was, a consensus was not to increase the tax rate. Hearing tonight's vote in regards to our budget, let's reopen this issue in regards to Northeast. Is it now still, is there a, any discussion or any change of opinions at this point in time in regards to that tax increase of 1 cent? I believe that was a 5-0 that we agreed to increase that, but I'm not positive about that.
I didn't agree to it.
Okay. I was not certain about that, Commissioner Burge. Is that a change? Let's do this. Do we have a motion to approve the 1-cent tax increase for Northeast? Do we have a motion to approve the 1-cent tax increase as requested by Northeast?
Does that move?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 4-1. Now, as it relates to Odell, Odell asked for a 3-cent increase. That was revised to a 2-cent increase. Do we have a motion to allow Odell to increase their fire tax by 2 cents?
Somebody, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion as it relates to that? We did have some comments tonight. Okay. Hearing no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
3, all opposed.
Aye.
3 to 2, that passes. Now, as it relates to Mount Pleasant rule, the consensus was not to pass that. Do we have a motion to approve or disapprove their rate, their rate increase, or request for a rate increase of, I believe it was 1 and 1/2 cents? 1 and 1/2 cents. Do we have a motion to approve or disapprove their request for a motion, for a tax increase?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, as I've pointed out, we talked about earlier today, I've come in from a different perspective, looking at Harrisburg as well as Mount Pleasant, that I've, have supported the increase in both of those. And I'll, I'll let that be known because, coming from my perspective, I was on this board when the arrangement with Harrisburg was worked out. I think that part of it is the bigger picture we have in the county of the transition we're seeing in the county to more and more of a need for fire service as our fire departments change. The, also, the, just from my, my involvement in the risk management community, I look at this, I didn't see requests to buy new trucks or new equipment. I see maintenance, and I see some things that need to be done there. And I know it's an equity issue that we've talked about in both of the situations, but if your house is burning down, I don't think you really, at that point in time, you'd rather have a working fire truck show up at your, at your building than your home. So, I'll make that a motion. I don't know whether to get a second or not.
Have.
I may be pushing a rope here, but I'll...
Let me make certain, we're, in regards to Mount Pleasant rule, we have a motion to approve their request for a 1 and 1/2 cent tax increase. Is there a second? approve their request for a one and a half cent tax increase. Is there a second? Hearing none, that dies. Do we have a motion to disapprove their request for a one and a half cent in tax increase?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second that. Do we have any discussion? One of the things, one of the things that I'm concerned in regards to Mount Pleasant is what was presented to us was a request for a drop tank and to replace an apron. And that totaled approximately $60,000, $63,000, which the tax increase would have fixed that. When asked if it was increased, could we not decrease it a year from now, we were told no, that there's more to it than just that. That was not presented to us. That is what a concern that I have, is that if we know what we're, what the overall picture is, we have a better idea about what we're voting on. That is the main reason why I turned it down, as well as the disparity between the city and the rural area. But, that is the reason why I would be voting in favor of this, that would not increase the tax. Commissioner Poole?
And for the people who have not been with us for our budget meetings, we are going to be doing a evaluation, I guess is the right term, of all the rural fire districts. Some of them have a low rate, some of them have a higher rate, some of them, I'm told, provide really, really good service, possibly even at a lower rate, and other ones maybe don't have the same level of service, even when you consider the volunteer nature of the fire districts. So, I am hopeful that once the evaluation is done, that we'll have a better understanding of all the fire districts that are out there in the county, and a better way to make sure that there's uniformity in the level of service that's provided throughout the county. So, my main reason, I think, for Mount Pleasant was to get the survey done, and that should give us a better indication of their rate and their needs.
Any other comments? Excuse me, any other comments? Commissioner Burge?
That, that should really be for the whole county, I think. But the other thing is, at our first work session, every one of these were voted down except for the one cent for Northeast. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Come back the next day and passed all of them but one. And, you know, to me, if you're going to pass two of them, you ought to pass all of them. Either pass all of them or don't pass any of them, is the way I look at it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burge. Anybody else? We have a motion not to approve the request for a tax increase for Mount Pleasant rule. We have a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries 4-1. The next where is Harrisburg rule. That is a request to increase the tax rate two cents. I'll recognize Commissioner Carruth's earlier statement that he would be in support of that.
Yep.
Is there a motion to, or is there a second to approve the tax increase for Harrisburg rule an additional two cents? Hearing none, that motion dies. Do we have a motion to disapprove their request for an increase of tax rate of two cents?
Is that moved?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion?
I would, I'm having a little bit of trouble with Harrisburg as I did with Odell, as far as whether they should have it or not. I have a, I've had a dead computer for anybody in Harrisburg for a good three weeks. So, my internet access has been quite limited, and I apologize if I did not get emails. Apparently, we have a very good filter on the system, and a couple of them, I now realize were sitting in a folder that was not accessible from my phone. So, I apologize to anyone that did send emails. I, they did not come through. My concern about Harrisburg is, the information that we got had a lot to do with the building upkeep, but I don't believe that that's what the increase was for. It's already the highest rate in the county at seven and a half cents, and this would put it up to nine and a half cents. And again, I understand what you're saying that of what's going on in Harrisburg. I know it's a higher growth area than some of the areas of the county, and that may have some factor into it. I'm not certain. But I do think that the, the evaluation is going to get everybody a better understanding of all of the fire districts. And a general comment, I think of the emails that I've now checked, I may be from all of these areas, I think maybe 10 emails. So, I'm just a little concerned. I checked with a couple of other people, residents who didn't send emails, but that I know, and they said, asked me what I was talking about. So, I'm concerned that how much information went out to the people who would be paying these taxes to, that we, why we didn't get more feedback during the process. Because our meetings have been publicized pretty well, and we obviously have ours on TV. So, I'm concerned that the citizens of all of these fire districts really, unless you're actively volunteering and a beneficiary of, of a rate increase for some of them, I'm concerned about how much information really is going out. And I don't have any way to judge that until the evaluation is done. So, I do have concerns about Harrisburg. I'm just not real cer, certain, and I think that there's a majority not to approve it at this point. So, anyway, those are some concerns I have about Harrisburg.
Any other comments?
I would just like to agree with Commissioner Poole that this is one of the highest tax rates in the county, fire district tax rates. And I'm not sure how it's gotten, it's gotten that high thus far. So, I think to add two cents to it, I think would be too much. And I have not received one email from any of the elected officials from the town of Harrisburg. I did receive an email from the town manager, but it was a form letter from, from their board. But I've not received any personal emails from any of the elected officials there in Harrisburg. So, just wanted to touch on that.
Well, I would agree with Commissioner Poole, as well as Commissioner Meesmer, is, I think, and I was trying to look, look back, but I thought that we had, we got about a 300-page PowerPoint from Harrisburg, and there's a lot of issues in regards to maintenance. Nowhere in the budget does it talk about maintenance. There was rust on some of the fire trucks. There was some issues in regards to Fire Station Number Two, in regards to maintenance issues. There was walls, I mean, where there's some issues in regards to, looks like spackling and some sheet rock. But nothing in the budget talked about maintenance and about what was going to be addressed in regards to maintenance. And Councilman Skaggs, this is the first night, first time I heard anything about a difficulty to communicate. I received three, two phone calls from Mayor Hagler, and I returned them, and I left a message. So, I don't know about these emails that, that were referenced, and I don't know of anything else that was referenced, but I responded to those phone calls to Mayor Hagler in regards to, that he left for me. And I think that I returned, I know I returned them. I think I left messages on him, on his voicemail or his phone at least three times. I know at least two times. It may have been three times. So, this difficulty to communicate, I'm very surprised at, and I don't, it's concerning me. Because if there's emails that I'm not getting, I need to know what's going on. And I have not received any phone calls other than those two phone calls from Mayor Hagler that I returned. So, and those were before our third budget session day. I'm not sure, remember, I think that was on June the first, and Memorial Day was the week before, was the, was the weekend before, and I'm almost positive, I was returning his phone calls on Sunday and possibly Monday. But, anyway. So, I'm concerned about that. But my big concern about Harrisburg is the maintenance issue, is there's a lot of stuff talking about maintenance, and then the budget dropped by $500,000, or the revenues dropped, or not the revenues, but spending was about $500,000, and it, I just couldn't make heads or tails of it. And my concern was, it is about the fire safety. It is, what's going to happen next? If the maintenance issues are the issue, but yet nothing's addressed in the budget, then what's going to happen next year when the maintenance isn't taking, isn't being touched on or isn't being addressed? So, that is a concern that I have in regards to the Harrisburg increase. And also, what Commissioner Poole said was, a county-wide study is being done, that is going to be done to try and figure out, make certain, is everybody receiving the same service or as close to the same service as possible? Any other discussions?
Chairman, just one, one thing in that, ahead of what Commissioner Poole said, I think it's going to be very important we do that, is that we are a changing county. You know, I look at our fire departments, and I look at the list of fire departments, and you see that the largest budgets are for the departments that are closest to either Charlotte, Kannapolis, or Concord, or in Harrisburg. And those, you know, we, I think it's going to be very important because, is, I pointed out before, we only have 364 square miles in Cabarrus County, and that's not getting any bigger. So, the more people we have in Cabarrus County, the more those different fire districts can't work independently of each other. And we know there's problems with volunteers in response because of the lack of volunteers, especially during the day. And I think that that's why, I mean, the comprehensive fire study will help us a lot towards looking at, what do we need to do? What, how do we need to, because we need to be thinking about, how do we transition from a county in providing services with 80,000 or 90,000 people as we had 20 years ago to a county where we have 200,000 people or 250,000 people? How are we going to provide the services that are needed, especially public safety services, that are needed to be consistent from, from border to border?
Anything, any other discussions? We have a motion to not increase the tax at the Harrisburg rule. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries 4-1. Next matter we have is on page 275, which is the Cabarrus County Capital Improvement Project Budget Ordinance. This is
Mr. Chairman, do we need to approve the overall ordinance?
That's what I'm, what I was going to do is address this and then do a blanket motion
For both of them?
For all of it.
Okay, got it.
I'm sorry. On page 405 is the revised capital improvement project list, which is, it looks like it's a reduction in, in the monies. Is that correct?
It was just a correction to a
Okay.
Miss Ray.
Do we have a motion to approve the capital improvement projects, budget ordinance for fiscal year 2011, 2012?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, one quick comment on the capital budget I'd like to make, and I don't know, back when we were planning the jail public safety center, I think I'll probably get some laughter from the staff when I mention this, but one of the things that was mentioned by some of the folks that live downtown was the fact that we have the bondsman along Union Street. And, you know, with now the, with the magistrate shifting around over where it's at now with the new public safety center, I wondered about, you know, we're having the budget, and we certainly should keep it in the budget because obviously it's the kind of shape it's in. We have, if we demolish the Board of Elections building, and then we just either pave it over or grass it over, it stays public property, it's not on the tax rolls. Would there be, I mean, and I know we did this with Bethel, would there be any thought of actually putting out for a bid to sell that to someone? It might be wanting, maybe there might be a bondsman wanting to move over on this side of, of town, downtown, to be nearer the magistrate's office versus, you know, on Union Street? You know, whether we can do that, maybe entertain that. There's something, I mean, obviously we can, we approve the budget with like it is, but maybe it'll wait, we'd save the $650,000 and possibly get a parcel back on the tax rolls as well. So, I'm not sure if it's even, from what I've heard, though, it may not be worth even trying to, to save. So, I'd just like to see, maybe think about that.
If that's something that we, we can, we can certainly think about it, but I think first, it would be best that Board of Elections gets out.
Yeah.
And then we look at the safety, the safety of the building. What's, what shape is the building truly in, once it's, everything's out?
Yeah.
You know? And then we can look at it there, is what, you know, is that something that's realistic and something that can be done?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Burge?
Well, what I was going to say is, all I've heard is how unsafe the building is, we wouldn't want to sell nobody another safe building.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
And that's what I'm saying, is once we get out, once we get out, then we can make a fair assessment.
It may be that we pull the last desk out of the building, the thing just kind of collapses on itself, so.
By the time you make repairs on it, you won't get the money out of it, anyway.
Yeah.
Well, one thing I wanted to make certain that we did cover is that we have adopted the budget 3-2 and all the accompanying funds. We've adopted the special fire tax for the Odell and Northeast, denied Mount Pleasant and Harrisburg. The one thing we have not done is to adopt the service districts, correct, for fiscal year 2011, 2012. Am I correct in that? So, we need to make a motion, do we need a motion to adopt the service districts for fiscal year 2011, 2012? Do we have that motion?
So moved.
We have that motion. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I believe that takes care of all of the budget issues for the night. Is that correct, Mrs. Nesbit? Next matter we have is G2, is the Harrisburg request by, or it's the request by Harrisburg and Charlotte Mecklenburg Utility Department. At this time, I would call on Mrs. Reep Smith for the presentation.
Good evening. This is a matter that we had talked about at the workshop, and this is the, this is our representative from C-MUD. He was here as well, and he's going to bring back, and actually, I don't know what the actual date is. He's going to give you the date that the property is going to be acquired by C-MUD officially, and deeds will transfer, and that at the end of a period of time, he's going to give us another date. And I can't remember you, I think you guys had said 30 days, or was it 10 days?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
It would take us two weeks to be able to
Two weeks, for them to transfer to us. So, what, actually, what we need is for you to give C-MUD permission to own property in Cabarrus County for two weeks.
Okay.
And you were going to give
We had this presentation at the work session. Do we need to hear anything further, or is there any other discussions based on that?
I believe we approve the resolution allowing the purchase of the property for a two-week period.
Okay.
What are the dates, please?
We actually do not have a date. We learned as of Friday that the public staff of the State Utility Commission has a policy issue they want the commission to hear first, which they are now looking at August 16th and 17th for an evidentiary hearing. And then, once that's resolved itself, the transfer would happen, we think, within a couple of days of that. But at this point, they're still trying to schedule all of the attorneys. So, it's somewhere in the middle of August, somewhere in that week of August 16th, August 20th, we believe it will happen, the transfer. But we don't have a date as of this past Friday. It moved.
Do you, the reason of the hearing, do you think that would make this so that it wouldn't happen? Or do you know what the
That is a possibility. One of the things that has come up as a part of the agreement with Carolina Water Service was that the proceeds they get from the sale, all of those proceeds had to go to their shareholders and not be plowed back into their statewide rates, and that was a part of the negotiated agreement. That has been the policy of the commission for a number of years. Well, the state staff or the public staff has decided they want to revisit that policy because those systems are getting smaller and the economies of scale are going down. So, they want to take that back to the commission. And if the commission changes its policy, then that invokes a clause in our agreement that possibly changes our contract, and negotiations with Carolina Water are possible to restart. So, yes, there are some unknowns that could unravel a portion of this, depending on what happens at that hearing.
So, then Commissioner Carruth, would you want to amend your motion so that it's contingent upon
I'd amend my motion that we, yeah, approve it for a two-week period contingent upon approval by the State Utilities Commission and the successful closing of the property.
That is actually the way our agreement is structured with Harrisburg, is that we have, whenever we close, within two weeks, we will transfer. So, whenever we can work out those details, then we'll have a closing date, which the clock will start ticking. And within two weeks, we will transfer to Harrisburg.
After the motion, I do want to address something else, but not part of the motion.
Yeah. Let me make certain that I restate the motion, make certain that Commissioner Carruth is, agrees with it. It's a motion to approve the transfer of property for approximately two weeks after It's a motion to approve the transfer of property for approximately two weeks after title has been transferred to Charlotte Mecklenburg, and in accordance with GS 153A-15, contingent upon approval from the state.
Couldn't say it better myself, so...
Sure.
Not exactly what I said, but I think that probably includes everything that has to be in there, so...
Okay.
The transfer would be...
Contingent upon the state approving.
Contingent, that's what I want to make sure we understand.
CMUD would own property in Cabarrus County, and within two weeks, they would transfer ownership to Harrisburg.
Right.
Just want to make sure that's in there, that ownership would be transferred...
That's the intent of it.
From them to Harrisburg.
The intent of it, end up with Harrisburg.
That's the whole point behind it.
That is the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
After the motion, it's after the vote.
Okay.
I just have a different question, similar but different.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
Now, my related but different question, the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County is working on a sludge project that I think you're aware of.
Right.
So are, is CMUD intending to continue dialogue with WASAC and participate in that project, do you know?
Yes, we are continuing the dialogue. One of our, I'll say restriction, for lack of a better description, we have a five-year contract to where our biosolids are owned by a private hauler. And so what we've been discussing with WASAC is we need, really, until that contract expires, I don't have an option, but we are continuing to have those discussions. And our intent is that we would be a partner if it's, you know, financially viable for us, because we're looking for the best alternative.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure if we're, you know, that's a group that's, obviously, this is related with, and I know that they've been having discussions on a number, with a number of different organizations, and thought I would put that plug in at this point in time, that I think this is beneficial for that area of the county, but I also think your participation in that second project would be beneficial. Even if it's five years out, I think that they would most definitely like to have the opportunity to work with you.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next matter we have is G3, is from the county manager, award a bid to J.D. Goodrum Company, Inc., for harvest facility, $847,000.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Way back in 2007, late in that year, the Board of Commissioners held a town hall meeting for people in agriculture. About 200 people showed up for that, and they talked about a number of things. One of the most important ones of those items that came up to them was an animal harvesting facility. We have a lot of folks that raise cows around here, but they don't have anywhere to take them, so people can actually buy them, eat them. So the board, after that, adopted a sustainable community initiative, and it included a number of things in them, was the construction of this facility. The county received a grant from the Department of Agriculture to pay for about half the cost of that. We've worked on, on all the different pieces of that are necessary to build something like that. In fact, in that same period of time, other counties were granted funds to do similar projects. There's a small animal processing facility that another county is building, and I believe the western part of the state, there have been food handling facilities built with these grant funds, and other matching funds. And this is sort of the biggest one of all those that was approved by the Department of Agriculture. We received today, an extension of the availability of these grant funds to do this construction that was necessary before this bid could be awarded. This is a project a lot of people have spent a lot of time working on, not just here, but all across the state, so we're very pleased to have it come to this point finally. We do have a representative of the company that's going to operate the facility here, Max Cruz is in the audience, if you have any questions for him, I'm certainly sure that he would be willing to answer those about the operation part. The actual construction cost would be less than the amount of the request here, it says the request is for you to approve this up to $847,000. We've asked the company to identify some savings, thus far, they've identified about $70,000 worth of savings, and we certainly hope that we can employ all those savings in the process. So there's no need to take any action with regard to funding, you've already done that, the funding is available, it's just a matter of awarding the bid to the lowest bidder. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Day?
I would make a motion to award the bid. I think this is a great, great move forward for us with our farms. Mr. Cruz, I'm a, almost every Saturday, regular customer. Much of what I buy heads to Boone also, by the way, it doesn't just stay here, but I think this is a great way for us to go and to support our local economy. So I think it's good news that you, that we were able to get the extension, so I would put that in the form of a motion to award the bid.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Just a couple of questions, I think, that one of the things, and we look at it, and I know this is probably going to be worked out in the details, John, but the, it's going to be owned by the county, you know, strictly with public money, operated by Mr. Cruz and his company that will operate it. Is there ever a time we see in transferring ownership down the road, long-term?
There is.
Or selling it, selling it, or...
The county is required to own it for at least five years, that's a requirement from the...
As part of the grant commission, okay.
That's correct. So we'll begin working on an agreement that satisfies all the parties, including the Department of Agriculture.
Well, the, and then, if something happens to Mr. Cruz, and I'm unable to operate the facility anymore, how would, what would we do at that point in time? Would we...
Well, there are two sons behind him, that are there.
Got it, okay.
One thing that I want to make certain that everybody understands is that the funding for this is coming from a grant from the North Carolina Agricultural Development and Farmland Preservation Trust Fund, and the balance, that's roughly 622,000. The balance of that is coming from private funds, for the most part. I mean, the majority of that is the private funds, it's not coming from the county.
That's right. There is money that's coming from, essentially, from Philip Morris.
Right.
And, and that was an important part of this project. Philip Morris, even though it announced it was closing some years ago, it still was entitled to receive an incentive grant. The company did decline to accept that, and the Board of Commissioners dedicated those funds from the company to this project.
Right, okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. I believe that takes care of the regular business, except for the appointments. At this time, I, we will look to the appointments in regards to the Board of Equalization and Review. Do we have a motion to reappoint Mrs. Mary Elizabeth Stewart to the Board of Equalization and Review for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2013, including an exception to appointment policy for length of service, and designate her as chairman? Reappoint Mr. Audie Dover for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2013, including exceptions to the appointment policy as mentioned above, and designate him as a vice chair? And reappoint Mr. Jeff Carpenter to a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014? Do we have that motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Staying on the Board of Equalization Review, do we have a motion to appoint Scott Dyer to a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014, to replace David McClellan? Appoint Glenn Tucker to replace Ronald Page for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2012? And appoint Keith Troutman as alternate for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2012? Do we have that motion?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Going down to the Central Line of Workforce Development, do we have a motion to reappoint Mrs. Lisa Conger and Mr. Tom, Thomas Godecki to the Central Line of Workforce Development Board for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2013, as requested, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy for Mrs. Conger?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have, under the Criminal Justice Partnership Program, do we have a motion to appoint Mrs. Helen Leek to the CJPP as a mental health representative to complete an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2013?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, or the JCPC program, or committee, do we have a motion to appoint Mrs. Erica Nesbit as the county manager designated to the JCPC to complete an expired term ending September 30th, 2013, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy? Do we have that motion?
So moved.
We have that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Now, we're going to do three here at one time, unless there's an objection. Motion to, do we have a motion to reappoint Judge Klineger, Mr. John Lewis, and Mrs. Carolyn Carpenter to the JCPC for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2013? A motion to appoint Mrs. Helen Leek to the JCPC to complete an unexpired term ending June, September 30th, 2012? And a motion to remove the following names from the JCPC roster, Tiffany Rhimes, Maren Hamby, and Gina Hampton. Do we have those motions?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Down to the Public Health Authority of Cabarrus County, or better known as the Cabarrus Health Alliance, do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Chad, Dr. Chad Weston to the PHA representing CMC Northeast Medical Staff for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014? And a motion to reappoint Dr. Alan Crusell to the PHA representing the Cabarrus County Medical Society for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014, including an exception to the length of service provision of the appointment policy? Do we have those motions?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Before we leave that one, I do want to call everybody's attention, Dr. Crusell has served, I think it is eight years, maybe 10 years, so that I will be, unless the board has a different opinion, we had, sort of have an understanding that although we certainly appreciate everybody serving, there's a length of time in which to serve, and that we need to have some different views, and I would contend that at the end of his term, there should be, we should be looking, or they should be looking for somebody else to, not that he hasn't provided adrenally service, but just like we'll address it here in a little bit with WASAC, is that, you know, we need to seek out other people, just to let everybody know that unless it changes, then I'll certainly make that statement to the CHA. Going to Region F, Aging Advisory Committee, do we have a motion to reappoint Mrs. Anita Helms to the Region F Advisory Committee as an alternate for one-year term ending June 30th, 2012, including an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy? And to reappoint Carol Vought and Mr. Ted Drain to the Region F Advisory Committee for two-year terms ending June 30th, 2013, and including an exception to the service on multiple boards provision of the appointment policy by Mr. Drain? Do we have those motions?
So moved.
We have those motions, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Department of Social Services, or Social Services Board, do we have a motion to appoint Mr. A.L. Fleming to the School Services Board for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014, including an exception to the appointment policy, and commend Mrs. Pruitt for her six years of service on that board?
So moved.
Do we have that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
If we have that motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. If Mrs. Pruitt would be so kind to attend one of our meetings, we'd certainly like to thank her for the many years that she has served on that board. Mr. Rose, if you don't mind asking her if she would be available. Next is the Tourism Authority. Do we have a motion to appoint Jessica Thickenstecker?
Good try.
I apologize, I apologize, I'm not going to try it again, to seat number two on the Tourism Authority for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014, as requested by the Tourism Authority, to appoint Mr. or Mayor Scott Pageant at large to seat number three on the Tourism Authority for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014, as requested by the Regional Chamber of Commerce? And do we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Ray Soparowski to seat number 10 for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014, as requested by the Tourism Authority, including an exception to the appointment policy? And to appoint Mr. Mike Downs to seat number one on the Tourism Authority for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014? Do we have those motions?
So moved.
We have that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Transportation Advisory Board. Do we have a motion to approve the reclassifications to the agency's representation as presented? And a motion to appoint Mrs. Vicki Proctor to the TAB as the Citizens Advocate retired position? Mrs. Jody Ramirez as the law enforcement representative? Mr. Daniel Payne, County Schools? And Mrs. Patricia Baker, Department of Social Services, for three-year terms ending June 30th, 2014, including an exception to the residency provision of the appointment policy for Mrs. Baker? An exception to the length of service provision to Mrs., for Mrs. Baker and Mr. Payne? And to remove Mr. Mingo from the TAB roster, and commend him for the many years of service, of dedicated service? Do we have that motion?
So moved.
We have that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have that motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I wondered about, since we've done it, we've done it for Mr. Quickle and also for Ms. Pruitt, obviously, it looks like Mr. Mingo has served since 1998 for 13 years, I think we should also...
That's what I was going to recommend to Mrs. Honeycutt, if we can get in touch with Mr. Mingo, if he's available to come to one of our meetings, we'd certainly like to appreciate him for the many years of service that he's given. Thank you. The next is the Water and Sewer Authority. And on this is that at our work session, we discussed soliciting advice from Concord, Harrisburg, Kannapolis, and Mount Pleasant, as it relates to a, an appointment to the, of an individual to the Water and Sewer Authority for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2014? And I believe that Commissioner Poole, as well as Commissioner Carruth, may have some recommendation?
Yes, we would like to, I would like to make a motion to appoint Bob Ritchie to, for the at-large position on the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County Board of Directors.
We have a motion to, well, it is a recommendation to appoint Mr. Bob Ritchie, and that recommendation comes from not only our representatives, but also from WASAC?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to appoint Bob Ritchie as a representative to the WASAC Board?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, we have that motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And as it relates to Mr. Quickle, who's served for many, many years, and he, we would like to have him here if he was available to come to recognize his many years of service. And a little bit of sad news, in regards to the Cabarrus Youth Council, we have some youth that are not able to serve on that council. Is there a motion to remove Mr. Drew Smith from the Cabarrus County Youth Council roster? Is there a motion to remove Mr. Drew Smith from the Cabarrus County Youth Council roster? Do we have that motion?
So moved.
We have that motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion carries. We do have some reports that are in here, that I'd ask everybody to have a chance to look at again. Once again, is there any updates from various boards that we're serving on that you'd like to bring to the attention of this board?
Mr. Chairman, the, just to remind everybody that Friday afternoon from 4:00 to 8:00 is the retirement recognition for Dan Cofflin from PBH, and also the grand opening ribbon cutting of the new area headquarters on Kannaplis Parkway, and it's located about, probably about a mile away from the intersection of Kannaplis Parkway and Highway 3, across from the nursing home up there on Kannaplis Parkway, you can't miss it. It sits down off the road, but the board has been invited to attend that grand opening.
Okay. Any others? I know that the Cabarrus Health Alliance have been very active in going to an online paperless system, and that is going online, I believe, July the 6th, and that's one of the first opportunities in the country for that to have taken place. There's also, they're obviously monitoring a lot of things, I got a report the other day, different issues that they're trying, they're monitoring, and unfortunately, when there is an issue in regards to a health, those that are having those issues are not, you know, aren't being responsible enough to take care of themselves, so that they actually have to have somebody send out to their house to make certain that the medicines are taken, so that it doesn't draw any more issues. Also, in regards to the travel, on international travel, they do have an opportunity that, I was looking at the website last night, that if you are traveling outside the United States, there's actually a map of the world that you can click on if you're gonna go there, to see if there's an alert, and if there, and also what sort of shots you need to get if you're going to that area, or what is, has recently there, and things you need to be aware of, just so everybody on our board would know, as well as the public. So I think that's important. Is there any other updates?
I wanted to give a report on the Cabarrus County Youth Council. The Youth Council went to Raleigh last week for three days with a 4-H citizenship focus program, and I accompanied them to Raleigh. They took several classes on how to be a good citizen, all about voting, also took a class on the process of state government and the budget process, how laws are enacted, and so they were a real good group. We met with Representative Barnhart and Senator Fletcher Hartzell, and they were a really good group, and I was really proud of them.
Good. Any other general comments from the board? I do want to commend Mrs. Dubois and her staff, you know, they've worked tirelessly, tirelessly in regards to the budget. I know that there is, every year that when I go through the budget, I have, you know, a ton of questions that I pose to them, and they're kind enough to look at them and have patience enough to meet with me and help me understand it a little bit better. So I want to commend them on that effort, and Mrs. Nesbit, I look forward to working with you in years to come. You know, you came in here at the midst of the tornado, and we'll see how it goes when you get to see it start from far away.